Also to order for the work session, August 4th, 2025, 3:00 PM. Lewiston Bell Building. Our first order of business is our pledge of allegiance. So if you'd please stand and join us in reciting our pledge. The flag is up here to your left.
Aye.
Aye.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, council and members of the public. Our next order of business is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for individuals wishing to comment on agenda items or other matters they wish to bring to attention. The council excluding those scheduled for a public hearing, as there may not be another opportunity to comment once an agenda item is addressed, individuals are encouraged to speak at this time. Individuals are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor, consideration of others wishing to speak. Comments are limited to three minutes. Also, your Lewiston City Council pledges to practice and promote civility within the government body, respecting others and their viewpoints. If you're here to provide citizen comments tonight, we have a podium right up front there. And microphones are above your head in the green lights. We ask for your name and your city of residence only. So with that, I will open it up for any citizen comments we have today.
I guess I'm the only one that cares. Kim Cronin. Been a while since I've been here. And I sit with about 16, 17 guys every Friday, have our little coffee session. And they said, why don't you ever go there anymore? And I says, well, it doesn't seem like anything happens when you do give your comments. But I see you have a survey online. The surveys are kind of like write-in ballots. You know, you get what you want to get out of them. But just for, I don't know, common sense, and I looked at the budget real quick, too. I didn't have time to really study it. But our main problem in Lewiston, and if anybody has any common sense can see, it's Briden Avenue. And if you look in that budget, we never have any money to totally redo a street. Briden Avenue won't get done in my time, the way we're going, and maybe none of your time. But I don't know why we do not have that in the budget. Fourth to Thane, five lanes. That's a connector. All your Lewiston Southeast Lewiston people, 21st Street and Briden. If you can't figure that out, you got a problem. That's your biggest roundabout down here, like the $350,000 one we put in that doesn't do anything. Roundabouts are the least of our concerns, people. We need Briden Avenue, Fourth to Thane fixed. I don't know. I don't know what you have to do to get it done. How about LOT? Lot? We're very, I think we need to send somebody down to legislature again and push for that local option tax. Because we're a recreational area, people, just as much as Sandpoint and McCall. So I really, I really wish you people, look at that. I don't know how you can miss it. Number two, Snake River Avenue. We haven't put any parking or any curbing over here for the park. But then we allow, and I think that came from planning and zoning, to put in a drug rehab place across from the most popular park in Lewiston. And I don't know how that got in there. That's not good. Where we have kids across the street playing and it's a drug rehab place. And then our streets, when we do put in streets, we put in a three-foot weed barrier. You know what I'm talking about? That three feet between the curb and the sidewalk where people are, I don't know what, what they're expected to do. Is that the property owner? Is that the city to take care of?
Property owner.
Why? Why not just, why not put concrete all the way out to the street? All that does encourage weeds to grow. And if you drive around, people, it's another obvious, common sense thing. The other thing, I looked in the budget real quick. We have Parks and Rec and Rec. Two separate places, and I don't know why. I wish you people would do an audit on the recreational department. 30 years ago, we had over 100 softball teams participate in the softball. And I'll bet you don't have 20 now. Same thing in basketball. I mean, I remember when the city begged to use our, our gymnasiums. I was athletic director here for 17 years. And I'll guarantee you, there's hardly any basketball. So where's all that money go? The Parks and Rec, when we have Boys and Girls Club running most of the recreational things going on here. You would think you could combine those. One other thing, meter fee. I pay 47 bucks a month for a meter fee rental. That goes to about 550 bucks a year. I've been in my house over 30 years. Do the math. That's 16, 17,000 bucks for rental fee on a meter. So I don't know where all that money's going. But I wish you people would really look. WIM, what's important now, your most important thing is Briden Avenue. You want to pass a grant, the city council, mayor, put Briden Avenue on it. I'll guarantee you, go drive it from four o'clock to six. And in the morning, from seven to nine. And Snake River Avenue is the same way. Fix your connectors, people. It's not a, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure that. And look at your budget, too. I mean, we're the highest tax place in the state of Idaho. But you could combine Parks and Rec and Rec and save some money there. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Tim. Are there further citizen comments out there? Okay. Counsel, next one moved to number four discussion items. Please note that identifying an item as an action item does not require the city council to vote on that item. Number A, Main Street bond update council direction, presentation of Main Street bond survey results, followed by discussion obtained council direction on potential next steps. This is an action item. We have our Public Works Director with us here today. And he will, I think we have a guest coming on one. He'll introduce her, too. So Director, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. So we have, let me see, can we get our presentation going real quick here? Move around a little bit here, give you an introduction and then hand it over. So again, it's been, what, two months since we had the bond? In your packet was kind of a description of, of the results. We needed a super majority. We came about 150 votes short. That was very close. I think there was some optimism in it early on. But actually, even the results were surprising to me of how close we were. So today, I kind of wanted to provide three things, an overview, an insight on the survey, and then kind of the result, basically the process of what we saw during the bond. We sent that survey out. It was out there for a little over a month. We got some really good feedback. And I think typically, when you're going out for a, a survey like that, you want to get a whole gamut of results, or I guess feedback, and we did that. So, you know, I'm not out there seeking affirmation. I'm out there trying to get positive feedback as far as, how was it received that we did, what we did, how can we make it better? And then repackage it, or if it's not a bond, if it's something else. And so, again, public comment like we just received, that's how I, I, you know, move when we get, you know, projects. Because I think everybody in this room is aware, there's always going to be more projects than there's going to be funds. And so prioritizing and packaging them, whether it's, whether it's bonds, it's grants, or, or funding in-house, there's never going to be enough money. So we always have to prioritize everything as, as they come along. So I think the bulk of what we'll be talking about, at least on the front end, is kind of the results and the feedback that we got. And I'm going to hand it over for desk portion. Afterwards, I'm going to give you an update on some of the things that have updates that we've gotten since the bond election. And then I'm going to want to get as much feedback as I can from you as for, as far as how we want to proceed on this project. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Christine Stoll, who is from Clearwater Financial, who has, they kind of put together that, they helped us during the bond campaign, kind of making sure, everything from, you know, making sure that we aren't skirting the election laws in Idaho, putting together the bond language, going out to working with us in Bond Council, and then during, doing that survey there at the end. And so I think Christine is probably the best person to have on this conversation as far as all of those things. And so we've kind of done our best to kind of package the, what we found out during the bond, the survey, where the bond rates are going, where construction is going. So we're going to leave it a little bit open-ended, and so hopefully just a dialogue. So I guess it may be a little hard with Christine being in Zoom, but let's try and make this as informal of a conversation as we can. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Christine right now and let her take it away and go from there.
Thank you, Director Johnson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, great. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for having me today. It's been a joy working with the city of Lewiston on this project. May I share my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see. Can you see it?
There you go.
Okay, great. So we, as, as Dustin indicated, I'm going to give you a high-level overview about the process and then the results from the election, as well as the post-election survey and some recommendations. So I'd like to start, excuse me, with the, let me see, get this going. Here we go. So there was, there was eight steps that, that the process, we went through in the process. And each one of these steps had a function. So the first was discovery. So this is fact-finding. And this is where we looked back on everything that you had done with your envision Lewiston and your downtown and other public outreach that you had done, as well as we looked at construction costs and, and learned about the project and those sorts of things. We then created schedules so that the team, which included several people from the city and several people from our team, Bond Council and so forth, could work together. And we scheduled out what our social posts, when they would happen, emails, as well as events. And we also created the approval for, when we created material for the city to use, then who would, who, what was the approval process for the city, and then the city would deploy those materials. The next step was demographics. So this is where we looked at your voter demographics to give you an idea of what we thought the turnout was going to be in May, as well as who we thought might be voting based on historical data. So we provided that to the city. The next, we did some interviews. We did interviews with several of you in the council, but also some stakeholders that had also participated as a citizens group and in your vision Lewiston. So we asked folks what their opinions were. We also talked to the Chamber of Commerce. The next part was, this was the meaty part where we were developing the materials that were going to be front-facing for the public. And so we created many, many materials that we'll show you a few samples of. And I do believe you have the final report that has the samples as well, go through this in a little more detail. But as we were looking to build and deploy, we were looking at things as to how do we explain the challenge, the needs and the challenges of this project? How do we explain the dedicated funds through the different enterprise funds that already exist that would alleviate the need to raise taxes or levies? How do we show the outcomes of this, meaning that we're going to combine the three projects into one that would alleviate duplication costs or reduce costs and reduce timelines? So then we looked at public meeting schedules and then the bond disclosures by law. So with those things in mind, we created various different outreach materials, everything from dedicated webpages and FAQs to emails, paid ads through the newspaper, social posts, direct mail, that sort of thing. I guess before I go there, I wanted just to mention that typically, a person needs seven touches to fully feel comfortable and understand a topic. And so that's why there are so many, you know, different touchpoints, if you will, in a campaign, is that we're trying to make sure that we reach people and hopefully in multiple ways. Likely, somebody is not going to see all of the materials, but that would be great in a perfect world. But the more that we can do in, in a different context, the more likely we are to connect with the end user, the end, your residents, who this would be important to. So this is just a snapshot of the first press release that went out on March 10th. Throughout the, the process, we did have a lot of earned media, which is when the, when the media runs a story about what the project. And so I want to say there was 23 stories in about 14 weeks about this, which is great. It's nice to have help getting the word out and also generating folks talking about it. So the first one out, went out March 10th. We also had 33 social posts that the city published. So we helped put together different posts, and they were scheduled for Monday, Wednesday, Friday, generally. And they had different themes. So one day was about project details, one day was about financials, and the other days were about FAQs, you know, myths, myths and so forth. Additionally, the city sent out a postcard. It arrived in homes by May 1. This was a reminder to, to vote, but also gave some details and directed folks back to the website. And you might also recall that there was utility insert as well. That generated quite a bit of discussion and calling into the city, because a lot of times that was the first time somebody had ever heard about it. So it was a really positive and helpful outreach item. There was also some paid ads through the newspaper, through the Tribune. These are just some samples of what they looked like. We were also able to get a newsletter highlight in the Tribune. And they also focused, put these on their social media. So we paid for six Sundays, consecutive Sundays. In addition, it ran on their channels and in their electronic version a couple of days a week. These were also, as you'll see in a little bit, one of the higher interactive creatives that were part of this process. So there was emails that were sent out as well. So we had five common emails and they matched. We tried to match them again to the different newspaper articles. So same topics, a lot of the same graphics, and this came directly from the city's platform. It went to the folks that were already opted in to receive city information. And so you can see that it was really successful. You had, you know, quite a lot of high-level opens and click-throughs and so forth, very low bounce backs. The city staff themselves did quite a few in-person events as well. You can see, here's some examples of those, various groups in Lewiston, Clarkston Rotary Coffee Groups as well. And I know that the mayor and Dustin, in particular, you know, a lot of times they walk into an establishment and somebody would just tap them on the shoulder and say, hey, can you sit down with my group and have coffee and discuss this? And they did. So there was quite a bit of one-on-one as well. And it's always nice to be able to have those conversations in person, which is why the city also had some open houses. They host three open houses for the public. Before I go there, and they were not actually attended very well. But for the folks that did attend, they were able to have a presentation that Director Johnson put together that had a very detailed information about the project, the funding and so forth, the bond language and what that meant and why it was needed and so forth. So for the people that did come to those, they left with a lot of information that helped them make their decision one way or the other. There was this video that Dustin and Carol Maurer from the city as well put together. And it also was a really great summary of the project, the funding, the needs and so forth. You also, at the same time, you, you are well aware of this, but you had a, another campaign by an absentee, which was largely your Chamber of Commerce and, and a group associated with that called Yes for Pipes. And it was running alongside, and it was a positive, supportive campaign that had its own funding and so forth. So the city was aware of this campaign, was not involved in the campaign, but did provide any of the materials that they were already producing and also stood for any questions that they might have or clarifications needed in any of the materials that they were sending out. I do want to indicate that there were people that called into the city that were confused, thinking that the city was running these ads, billboards and so forth, but it was not funded by the city. Okay, so after we had all of this information out, the next step was to analyze how things were going. Excuse me. And so part of that is, we are analyzing all the way through the campaign. So we're getting feedback from stakeholders, we're watching social media channels, we're hearing from the city, from your public events or just anecdotally when you talk to folks. And we're learning and we're pivoting and adjusting. So oftentimes, we would hear that something might be confusing, or they'd like to hear a little bit more about that. So we would help create some materials so that your staff had that to talk to the public with. The next thing that we're going to talk about is your election results. And then we also did a post-election survey. So we're going to get into your election results. You as, you were very, very close. You had 60, almost 62% in favor. You needed 66.7% of 154 votes of the people participating in that election. Very high support for a very low turnout. You had 18%, I want to say 18.2% people voted that day. There's a couple of things that might have happened. This was the only thing on the ballot. And when we looked at results as to, we asked people if they voted or they didn't vote and why. And several people said, I didn't even know there was anything to vote on. So there was a lot of information about needing information. So I, I think we had about 14 weeks, 72 business days, and we could have used a longer timeframe to educate the public a little bit further. But what I wanted to point out on this slide is that you'll see in the green, those are the precincts that had a very high support level. And I also want to mention that every single one of your precincts voted in, affirmed their support over 50%. There was not one precinct that had less than 50% in support. Now, the ones in green had well over 50%, in fact, getting you over the threshold of 66.7%. The ones in orange were, were also very high, but they're the lower ones. So, you know, a little more digging into those precincts could be helpful. What I also wanted to show is that two age groups primarily showed up at the polls and voted. That was your 60 to 70, well, 60 to 74-year-olds and 74-plus. Those are your two largest groups that showed up at the polls that day. That said, still of those groups, where typically are very conservative on fixed incomes, you still had almost 62% support. This is your estimated participation for November 2024. Actually, sorry, it's supposed to be, this is the, what we estimated the participation to be was 34%. And, no, I apologize. This is for November 2025. I have a typo. So we estimate in November 2025, you'll have a 34% turnout. We estimated that you had a 28% turnout for May, but it actually came in at 18%. So it was a lot lower than we had anticipated. Typical for a November election, a general election, 34% is very typical. So these are the same precincts, again, highlighted in the same way as the previous slide, indicating what we think potentially their support would be. And why we bring this up is because what we found on election night was up until about 9:30 PM your time, you were above 66.7%. And so that typically, those votes are typically counted for your early and absentee votes first. Those votes were more in support. And then after 9:30, the rest of the precincts started coming in. So some thoughts about, you know, in the future is thinking about helping to educate early and often, but also getting to those folks that like to vote early and absentee, because typically, they might be more supportive for something that you're interested in. This is just showing you historically, the rates in which people come and do early and absentee. You note that in 2020, it's an outlier. A lot of people voted in 2020. The other thing I forgot to tell you is that you had almost 2,000 newly registered folks this election. Now, not all of them voted, but going into the election, you had about, let's see, 15,000, 15,603 registered voters. On voting day, you had 17,517 people registered, which was an increase of 1,914. I think that's really interesting. You have more people being, maybe you're having more people move in or, or just get ready to be more involved. Okay, so after we saw the election results, and we knew that we missed it just by a hair, we were interested in learning more as to why it was supported or why it wasn't supported. So we decided to launch a post-election survey. This is a copy of the press release that went out on May 28th. This was put out on social media, on the city's website, as well as newsletters and emails. So this is, I'm going to give you really high level. I know you have the packet with all of the information for every question. So this will be high level as to the results were. So it went out May 28th and through June 30. the results were. So it went out May twenty-eighth and through June thirtieth, we had four hundred and seventy-four results or responses. In general, people that we, we, well, we wanted to know why it was supported, why it wasn't supported. That was the point. And then this is just indicating where it was shared. So some key takeaways. Of the people that took this survey, fifty-eight percent of them said that they did not support. Well, actually sixty-five percent of the respondents said that they didn't vote yes for this, which was interesting and I guess maybe positive so that we knew why. So the people that voted no responded to this survey. So we knew and could learn more as to why they did not. And you'll, you'll notice that we go here. People needed, they indicated that they needed a lot more information, just time probably to hear more or be involved or go to a public open house. They wanted to know more about how the current funding sources were going to fund this rather than how they're going to pay the bond payment, if you will. What the, why there was a tax impact statement? If you had other funds to already pay it. And then they also wanted to know general information about how city finances worked. And then there was some confusion or angst, if you will, about traffic, roundabouts versus two-way, even though that really wasn't part of that discussion. So the folks that supported this, that, that responded, they indicated that they did understand the project. They did understand that it would reduce cost timelines and repetitions in construction. And that's what they wanted. And so those folks said, yep, I understood that they needed it and why. The folks that said they did not support it said they didn't want their taxes raised. And they didn't trust that he was being honest in that they wouldn't raise levies or taxes. So again, I think more time to educate folks would have been helpful because the, the information that was out there indicated clearly that there wasn't a need to raise levies or taxes. So some key takeaways from that was, there was also seventy-two, seventy-eight percent said that they did receive communications. So the information that we created and the city put out, eight percent said, yeah, we saw some of that. And for those that did receive the communications, they said that forty-four percent of them said, yep, they voted yes for it. And still fifty-five percent, again, of those taking the survey said, no, they voted no. And for those who did not receive the communications, thirty percent said they voted yes and sixty-nine percent voted no. So again, it is important to get the communications out to as many people and early and often. This, these are just some key things to show you of the communications that were out. What, one of the questions was, what information would this person need in order to make a decision to learn more or influence their decision? So a lot of people said that they would like to have heard information about the bond and how it would be paid from existing revenues. That was covered extensively, but again, I think the short window didn't allow everybody to hear that message. And then more details about current city funding and how the city uses them. Also, when we asked them, what communication methods did they interact with during this campaign? You'll see this one, social media and newspaper articles were very high. And then close behind them, but not quite as high were direct mail and the city's website. So again, indicating that social media, newspaper articles, and then direct mail were very important in this process. This question was, if you, if, if there was another bond, would you be willing to share information with family and friends? Overwhelmingly, almost eighty percent said yes, they would be willing to share, which is great. Then there were some questions on suggested solutions, which I, I think this is kind of interesting because we asked. So if they were, if the city was to look at November twenty-five for a bond measure again, how supportive of you, how supportive would you be? Now, this is a, on a four-point scale. So this got pretty much a two, which is somewhat neutral. When you look at very supportive and unsupportive, it averages out to, to a neutral. When we asked them if they would prefer the, the city do nothing and only fix pipes if there's leaks or catastrophic failure, even if this may require utility rate or property tax increase, very high and supportive. Then we asked, okay, if the city is going, how supportive you are addressing the infrastructure projects separately, water, sewer, stormwater, knowing this would involve separate timelines, funding and digging up and replacing affected streets each time. Again, unsupportive. So there isn't a clear, you know, go ahead, one way or the other. We know that folks want something done. They don't want you to wait until things are broken. They're not, they need more information for a future bond, if, if that's in the cards. And they would, it looks to me, it looks like they would rather not have it done three different ways. So I'll stand for questions in just a minute. Our recommendations, we had several and we put more in the report, but basically, you know, you can also look at judicial confirmation for any qualifying projects in the, in the future, if, if that seems appropriate. You'll need to determine if you're going to, if, if a bond is in the future for funding this, this project. Seek additional grants and partners to help maybe lower the cost to participants for, for a bond. We would suggest continuing your outreach process. So you already have a lot of momentum and just continuing that conversation so that you can educate your community. Really rather, doesn't really matter how you're going to fund it. They, they need to know the details. And so we would say, keep going. Keep, take all the materials that were developed and just keep putting them out there and hosting open events and having those conversations to increase your awareness and the conversation and questions. You could recruit ambassadors for continuous public engagement, consider establishing a permanent citizens committee. So these would be folks that could act on, help carry the message on their own time rather than city staff, which is limited in the abilities time-wise to do those things. Infuse helpful information and facts into future surveys, utilizing them as educational tools. Maybe have a FAQ Friday or a fact myth question and answer Friday on your social media, newsletters, whatever that might be. And then encourage voting participation, especially for folks that like to vote early or absentee. So in general, you had a very successful process and you had a very successful education campaign. I, we do feel that the timeline was pretty, pretty tight for getting to everybody that we needed to get to. But we do want you to be proud of yourself that you had almost sixty-two percent, which is very hard in Idaho to get that much support for really anything. So that said, I want to pause and take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Kristi. Council members, do you have questions for Kristi? Counselor Spicklemeyer. Thank you, Mayor. I guess my biggest question and it's more of a comment is that most of the feedback I got was also that it was far too technical, the explanation of the financial part. Understand all that. And I'm wondering if legally, if you could, for me, dummy it down. So people, it was more black and white. They could tell what thing, who's paying for what. Whole thing about the tax burden and that and the tax, the levies, that really threw people off. Thinking that we were telling them there wasn't going to be, but we slid that in there because that'd just save us in the end because we're going to tax them anyway. I just think it was far too technical. I think if we had it out there really black and white, people would have accepted it. It got better towards the end when we put out publications, but those first, that first month, I think that is the one that came to us. I think people just took a backseat on that when we explained all of the other bonds and then they were all concerned that we had too much debt. Didn't understand who was paying for that. So just kind of a comment more than a question.
I do think it's a great comment and I think you're absolutely right, Councilman Spicklemeyer. It, it is complicated. And Idaho law requires that we have a certain language and unfortunately, the language is not very, it's just not lame in terms. It's not very friendly for most folks to read. So this team, our team and the city did work this last week and reached out to Secretary of State as well as your county clerk to see if, what leeway we had for word limit and so forth. What we found was we were limited to two hundred and fifty, which words, which is what we had this last time. But we certainly are relooking at how we might, in the areas where we do have a little bit of leeway, how we might be able to explain that more. I think the concern is, well, we have the required bond disclosure that was on all of the materials. And again, to your point, it does indicate that, you know, by law, they have to tell you that if for whatever reason, the enterprise funds were not there to pay the bond payment, which would seem highly unlikely, then this bond could come back, this bond would have to be paid and it's telling you how much it would be paid. It's a little bit hard to get around that. We can definitely relook at how we can explain that within a limited availability based on Idaho law. So we're currently looking at things, you know, would we move some of the language around? It led with what the debt was for the city and maybe, maybe that's not the best place. Maybe we put that, you know, a paragraph down or so forth. But I think to your point, if we would have had more time, because one of those things where we listened and learned and pivoted was in the presentation that Director Johnson did, where we were hearing from people that they didn't understand the disclosure language. And so we put a, a slide in his presentation that broke down what the ballot was going to look like because we were trying to avoid people thinking it was a bait and switch. But certainly open to any suggestions on how to move forward in that realm, given the legal requirements.
Counselor Spicklemeyer, follow-up?
So if it were to be put on an upcoming election, is that considered a negative by the public? You know, times they'll say, well, we already told you no. You know, how many times do we have to say it?
No, it's not. And you'll see a lot of municipalities will run things several times. What it does allow for is, is additional education time. And as we saw from the materials that you have in your packet and the comments and so forth, is that lots of people felt uninformed. They just didn't feel informed enough to be able to show up at the polls. And so I think a little more time would, would help with that. And we, we typically see that when people do feel more informed, that does obviously affects the way that they're going to vote. And we would anticipate that people would be more supportive of this, given that you, or you do have dedicated funds that are allowing or being able to pay your bond payment without a tax increase and a levy increase. And once people feel more comfortable with that or, or understand that what we heard anecdotally and what we would anticipate is that people would say, okay, that makes sense.
Counselor Wright?
Yes, thank you. So I get, I have two, but the, the first one is, do you have an indication of what percentage voted no because of the roundabouts and improvements to the downtown area that were outside of the pipe infrastructure?
Let me see. I'm looking quickly through the report to see if I can find that slide. We had a whole bunch of folks.
It was brought up a lot, it seemed.
It was. It was brought up a lot and it was surprising because it was not part of any of the materials that we put out or the city put out. I do think it was a carryover for, from the conversations about the envisioned Lewiston. And you all know, but your public needed to know a little bit more, is that that couldn't have been decided yet because that was down the road. First, it was going to be decided, you know, what the project was going to be and how, what the funding was so that you could enter into your, your design process and so forth. And so the, the actual traffic pattern wasn't part of this discussion right now. But do you think it was a carryover? Or at least we heard that from folks and they thought it was all intertwined. Let me see. Okay, I'm looking on a, a different screen for these results. Okay, so of the people that, so we said, please share your primary reasons for not supporting the bond measure to fund comprehensive infrastructure upgrades for Lewiston's water, sewer and stormwater systems. Please choose all that apply. So forty, thirty-four percent, thirty-four point forty, said, I was concerned about the possibility of a roundabout and/or two-way traffic changes. Thirty-four percent of the people that responded to this survey said that. They also said other things as well. And then this is interesting. It says, please indicate why you did not participate in the May twenty twenty-five election. So people said, I meant to, but I wasn't able to. Thirty-eight percent, almost thirty-nine percent. The next highest, that was the highest. The next highest was, well, there was a whole of feedback items that people wrote in. And so we gave you guys all of those. But then people said, I didn't feel informed enough to vote on the bond measure. Twenty percent of people said that. And so those were the two highest. I, I meant to and I didn't feel informed.
And then just the other piece, less of a question, just more of a comment. One of the other big things I noticed was the, not the trust issue that we had with a large amount of the people at least that were responding to this survey. And I almost wonder if there's a need even outside of, of this, this type of campaigning to find a way to try and reach those people or be more transparent. So that we can increase the trust overall. Because something like this, when there is, you know, some language that's confusing, to your point, people who are already on the side of not trusting, that's, right away, I would assume you're, you're going to have a hard time getting that vote.
I think that's a good assumption, yes. Yep, there was a lot of discussion about people not trusting what the city was saying that they would, they would do. So I do, again, you know, I hate to sound like a broken record, but I think a longer timeframe to educate people and get face-to-face with them. Certainly some folks are just not, you know, they're, they're not, they may not change their mind. But I, I think the good, a lot of folks that are, you know, really wanting to learn more and, and understand, once they, once they saw the material and understood and saw where the funds were paying for it, or you already paid for your, your revenue bonds and you had plenty of money to pay this bond. The feedback was that most people said, oh, that makes sense. But to your point, what was working against those personal conversations was that legal discretion that's required by the law that sure doesn't make people feel very confident.
It's okay. I'm just going to move us right along into
Okay.
next portion of the conversation. Kristi will still stay on the line as we work through the rest of the real short conversation, but we're kind of evolving into the, the overall questions I've got. So first, I'll just give you the update as to what's, what's happened. What have we been up to since we last spoke? And so actually, that was the day of the election. The mayor and I went out to Region Two ITD headquarters here in North Lewiston and sat down with their second-in-command from the whole state of Idaho and walked through kind of their concerns about our design, our concerns about, you know, working within their right-of-way. And I, I think this was communicated during the open houses and during the, the campaigns and, and conversations we had, but ITD is not supportive at all for roundabouts within state right-of-way. And that was communicated into our, in our meeting. And so, and I also, you know, and again, that was part of the reason why And I also, you know, and again, that was part of the reason why it was not part of the, you know, public outreach was. I think at the third open house, I explicitly said. Where we're going in with roundabouts will be decided first by the state of Idaho, second by citizens and participating. You know, in the public process as we work from the pipes under the ground on the way up. And so since that, those meetings, even, even before that meeting with the Assistant Director. It was clear it was going to be an uphill battle for, for roundabouts and so. Long story short, we evolved to the point saying, okay, well, if ITD is going to take, take a stake in the design, are you going to financially contribute? And they agreed to, yes, we will. And so if you're not aware, ITD right of way starts at the bypass, so heading. East on D Street, then right on First Street behind the hotel and then onto the, the bridge. And I, interestingly enough, that is the most complicated part, not only transportation wise, because you've got all the traffic. Coming and going off the Blue Bridge and the bypass and Snake River and Prospect and then going in and out of downtown. But you also had, that's where all the big sewer pinch points are as far as flow and so. That's a significant part of the project, but ITD has agreed to contribute all the transportation components within their right of way. And I think I said in the packet, roughly that's somewhere between probably four and seven million dollars. They reached out to our design consultant, Welch Comer, and are doing their own work separately to vet out the design. They, they aren't super crazy with the signal design and they're not super crazy about roundabouts. So they're working up, you know, modeling and transportation stuff that would meet all of the requirements by ITD. You know, the good news is we're, we're gonna get money from the state for the project. The bad news is that probably takes a lot of the public out of it because it's going to be designed like a state highway. And their parameters for design are a little bit different than maybe what the city of Lewiston would do. You know, so it's, it's on its way through Region Two and headquarters. And I can let you know as that, that continues through the evolution of projects. Second component was, if you remember, there was ARPA water main money that was driving this. And our goal was to complete all of the water main in Main Street. And we generally, we contracted with a contractor that we gave them two bid specs. One, if the bond passed and one if the bond failed. And so the intent was if the bond failed, we were doing Main Street anyway, we're just gonna take that pipe and run with it. If the bond passed, we would do the side projects and so that would be. D Street in front of this building and then third connecting it into well one A. Well, the results came back, one, we weren't going to be able to finish all the main in Main Street. And so we were going to be about three quarters of the way short and then still tear up Main Street. And then second, being a hundred and fifty votes short or a hundred and fifty-four, whatever it was. It gave us pause in that, is this project possible in the next two, three years? Given the funding sources that we've had. And so we met with the mayor, we met with the contractor, we met with the engineers and we made, we made the decision to not go into Main Street. So we've, you know, working with the contractor, they've pulled off the project. They finished that portion that was phase one, that was regardless of what would happen with the main, Main Street bond. And they're onto their next project and they will start that D Street, third, Fifth Street. Other work off of Main Street in the spring, so we will exhaust all the ARPA dollars. You know, they've got to be spent by the end of twenty-six and so that's what they'll be doing. Instead of Main Street, so we won't get anything beyond Ninth Street. Where we've got, where we took it as far as west, so Ninth to basically First is where we won't have a new water main in Main Street. And so we're deferring that into again, kind of that larger project. At some point, you know, as I showed during all the town halls, the water main breaks. Are going to dictate the sections that we'll replace. The good news is that's larger main than some of this other stuff that leaks more prevalently. So we should get a little bit more time than some of these side streets, so that's, that's the direction we're going with that. And with that, we've kind of already hit into some of these things, but this is where, you know, between the mayor, myself and Christine, kind of hoping to get some feedback. Do you, do you want to take this on this fall? Do you want to defer it? And how can we repackage this to make it more digestible for the public? And along Counselor Spicklemeyer's comment of. Once we put that GO bond, the general obligation component, it doesn't matter where we pay it from. It is, you know, we're leveraging the collateral for that, that good rate and that good loan is the city's authority to tax, property taxes. If we take that component out and find alternative, you know, like the SRF loans for the enterprise funds, that's a, that's a revenue bond. And we don't have to get two thirds and so that brings that threshold to fifty percent. So yeah, between ITD money and what we have on hand, we may get to the point where we don't need to run that GO bond. But that's the problem is that's that threshold, so the more creative you try to get with your funding sources by, by not over. You know, making one entity pay for everything, the hard, it just gets more complicated. And again, if, if the public doesn't trust us, when I've got four slides to explain you where all the revenue is coming from. It's just, it's hard to get people to, one, either understand it or two, trust that the figures you're giving them are actually gonna be what we're gonna pay for it. So I will stop talking and get hand the floor over to you guys and just give us.
I have a question then, on your last bullet here, like putting it on the fall ballot. He said about five times that we didn't have enough time in the spring one, is two more, two and a half months enough time?
Well, that's, that's exactly, that's why I'm bringing it to you today is, you know, filing deadline for council seats. The same filing deadline for ballot language, which is the last day of August. And so for us to get a resolution in front of you would be in August. And last time we did it in three readings, I don't have a dollar figure to give you. I mean, the last one was twenty-five million, we ran the numbers on a twenty-one million dollars bond, so I can show you. How, you know, we brought that demand on the bond down, but. You're correct, it would feel a little quick turnaround to get it on the, on the ballot. And then, yeah, you've got October, October, the campaign, the first part of November.
But I think it needs to go on the ballot again, I just think fall, this fall is too quick.
Counselor, you have in your packet today a memo from Public Works Director Dustin Johnson and. It's a two-page memo and on the backside of that, it details some of his comments, including. With the partnership of ITD, the possibility of lowering that GO bond. Closer to twenty million that we could run in November. Again, he says, we'd need to adopt the ballot language in August. He says, if council is supportive of bringing the bond back to the voters this fall. Staff will have the resolution for the bond language on the August eleventh city council meeting for their consideration, which would be next Monday. So. And then of course, if the council is not supportive, then it'll have to go somewhere in twenty-six. So when we look at the budget this year too, we're making a decision to go down that road of starting to save more money to pay for this thing versus a bond. I mean, that's our other option, so you will, you will see some of that reflected in the budget this year and it's on purpose, it's intentional. But anyway, this is what the director is asking for us and. Counselor Klein?
Yeah, so it seems to me like the, the good thing about running it in November again is we've already got this momentum. We've already, we've already presented it to people and gotten the information out there where if we wait too long, people are gonna forget. We're gonna have to start all over from the beginning. So I agree with that. It seems like by doing it in November, we can kind of pick up the pieces and where we, where we made that mistake where if we wait, we're gonna have to start over again.
Counselor Forsman?
I would echo Counselor Klein, not to mention now you have it in November, which is a really, you know, it's a very, other things are on the ballot. You have the mayor's seat open, councilor's seats open, we'll be campaigning, those that are rerunning. And might get asked from the citizens, what is this bond, what's, you know, and then this is an opportunity for them to ask. So this is probably the, I would think, one of the better times for us to be able to have more and more information out there than we did. From the first time we ran through, so I'm, I'm in support of getting it out there and I'm trying to educate the public as much as possible. So they feel informed into making a good decision.
Counselors, further discussion, Council President Kleberg?
I agree with some of the points and the reduction in the amount. And stressing the fact that we've got support from Idaho Transportation Department might. Might be enough to convince a few folks, I don't know. But I think we've also seen things in the past where. Didn't turn out right, so vote came back to people and it lost again a little worse, so. Not really a crap shoot, but I think I do agree with the fact that we did a good education campaign. And that information still, I would think, fresh in some people's minds and. Well, I mean, I, I mean, I'm fine with running it in November.
Counselor Schroder?
Thank you, I totally agree that. This isn't the first time we've had to go back and go back, three times for the school, wasn't it?
Never been.
And so why wait, don't delay it, the, the message is out there. They're going to maybe key on better educating themselves. I know that's what I did on the, the, you know, nobody wanted to do it at first, but it took three times and so. We need to just stay the course and keep the education program going and. That's my two cents.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
So is the transportation funding guaranteed? Is it already approved by the state?
No, I mean, it has to be, so they have to put it in their capital budget. So they're, it's a, it's a handshake deal.
We could, can advertise it until that's a fact, true?
I mean, we could, there's nothing that says we. I, I, I don't have an answer for that, I mean, we're not gonna get a contract from them that says, here's, you know, five million dollars or whatever it is that they're gonna commit to it. Typically on these larger projects, it's like, you know, Snake River or Bryden, it's programmed into a budget. They, they're not gonna be, they've already said, we can't program it until, you know, our time is up and so it's gonna be probably twenty-nine or thirty. And then at that point, it gets programmed and then once the dollars are available, it gets distributed out. You know, when we pass a bond, it's a lot like these SRF projects out at the plants. You know, we, we still, we weren't gonna do a hundred percent design until we got to that, you know, funding, you know, you, it's that chicken and the egg. Do you get the bond and then, you know, you don't want to do a hundred percent design because that's wasted money. And so the SRF loans that, we were just closing those out in the last year, so it took, what is it, five years? So if a bond were to pass, that would give us the, the capital to, to do the, the, the full design. And then we draw that slowly out and then at that same time, we'd line it up with the obligation of what ITD could provide for that project. And so I don't know that we could run a campaign, I mean, we could, but it would be several years out until they could. You know, and then the risk of, well, that we've got it programmed in the twenty-nine budget and then we can't pass a bond. And so you just kind of run along until everything gets lined up and then, and then you're, you're there. You know, ITD, a project, five million dollars in the state budget is a lot different than five million dollars in our budget. It's just a bigger pot and they should be able to draw out. I, I did meet with our, you know, our local and even the state representatives multiple times and they have committed to it. That's not to say that they quit, quit tomorrow and our project gets pulled out, but. I'm confident enough to say, you know, we're gonna get money from the state for this.
Counselor President Kleberg?
What's your opinion, Dustin?
Don't ask me, I was the one who did all these open houses and so. It's a lot of commitment and it's not cheap, you know, it's staff time, it's, you know, social media, it's advertising. It's all of these things, I mean, I am struggling with it probably just like you guys in that I don't want to lose traction. And so if you wanted to run it in May, I may be obnoxious and where I come to you every month to say, here's, here's what ITD is saying, here's all these things. Here's what I'm getting feedback from the downtown property owners, because I don't, I don't want to slip back. So, you know, running it seems, seems like the best way to keep it upfront, but I know it's just a lot of work and commitment.
Counselor Klein?
Do you know what the rates are looking at, looking like right now?
The bond rates? The bond, so Christine emailed me this about an hour before the meeting that, and I can get you all this, the, the printout, but they ran the same. So when we, they look at the, where the bond rates are at and you just pick a conservative estimate. And so you don't want to undershoot it because then you're gonna miss it. So the, the number they used for this was the same number that we've, we've used before. So they've, when we met last week, they've gone up just a hair, but they ran a three point seven five. At twenty-one million dollars and the, and the debt service annually goes down from one point four to one point one eight million a year. And then that part that everybody was concerned about, where you talk about that annual impact per one hundred thousand dollars of value. It goes from thirty-six dollars and fifteen cents per hundred thousand to thirty dollars and seventy-four cents. So you're, you're, because when ITD contributes, it's all coming out of your general or your, your property tax component. Like they're not contributing to the enterprise funds, so that just lowers your draw on the property tax component.
Counselor Forsman?
One of the things I kept seeing when we were first running it was, is that people were under the impression that we had the money. And so they're like, why are we asking, why are they asking for money when they said they have the money? So there was a huge misconception of what that, what actually meant, not necessarily, I don't think they really understood that. It was like, we have some of the money as a collateral to say, we can get this loan and then make payments with existing dollars, but we don't all have it at once. I think they were under the impression that we could just wake up tomorrow and give them the money and get the project done. And that was a huge part of, I know people not wanting to vote yes to it. As well as the roundabout thing and I think that's because we had meetings with pictures everywhere showing what the roundabouts would look like. So I don't know if there's ways that we can. I think you guys did a really good job with open houses and if more people came today, I think it definitely would have been a better turnout. Because you guys were, I think, getting rid of those misconceptions as much as you could. But it's hard when we just don't have a big turnout with the open houses, so hopefully we can, I don't know, find some better ways to. Eliminate, like to really make it clear to the citizens that we don't have the money all at once and how it's coming out of different pockets of money. Make accounts and public water and all that, so.
Yeah, it was, it was, I mean, something, you know, I've worked in the public sector for twenty plus years. And it was an eye-opening experience for me because I'm, you know, in my forties and I'm just now figuring out how property taxes are assessed. And how they're processed and how the, the city has not raised property taxes in three years, but your property tax bill has gone up. That is not a direct, you know, the city is not impacting that directly, how we've operated. Our, our budgets have states that have gone down and they've stayed stagnant for three years. But to communicate that and it was funny because, you know, you, you, I, I got, I got snickered at and, 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 you know. That is something that I think the city, you know, as part of the education and trust issue is just to get out in front of some of these. Without the city's voice out there talking about property taxes and enterprise funds and GO bonds. There, somebody's gonna fill that in the, in the void. And we're in an age of a lot of communication, communication out there and it doesn't necessarily mean it has to be truth to be communicated. So yeah, that's, that's a huge part of what I think particularly Public Works needs to work on is getting out there and getting, getting more of that. You know, it's, my job is boring and so it, it is numbers, it's black and white and there's not much, you know, it's pipes and streets. So you're right.
Counselor Schroder?
Along that line, we know that. Facebook, social media, whatever is a big part of what the community looks at now. And we, you had gone back through and you found a lot of things that were not correct. And is there a way to fact find and publish things in all that? I mean, I don't know how it all works, but.
Yeah, I think working with the PIO's office and the mayor, we've, we've, we've spitballed a couple of different concepts of trying to, you know, there's. You know, everything from the city solar snowplows to Moscow or we're the highest taxed city in Idaho, like those things. You know, this tax issue, it's complicated and there's lots of, you know, different things to share with people. And it, you know, and maybe we can put it in a video that's two minutes long, will they believe the video? I don't know, but there, that's something that I think we have talked about internally, just trying to, like I said, if, if. There's no counter to that voice out there, it just, it's an echo chamber out there and so.
And they believe it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Counselors, today I sent you, shared some information I sent to the clerk, city clerk, about levies in the state of Idaho. And in fact, we're not the highest in Idaho. But when you look at everything that's consolidated, so when it comes like our school levy, we are the highest in the state. And so when you add that to the city levy, to the county levy, you know, to the port levy and depending on where you live in the city, the COSD levy, it adds up. It's pretty high. We're way up near the top, but it's not the city that's driving that alone. There's other things going on, but I think as a city, we can be pretty proud of the job that we've done over the last few years and where we're headed, so. But that's provided to you for information. So if somebody says, hey, Lewiston is the highest in the state, that's not a true statement and you've got a copy of it now to look at, so.
Mayor.
Counselor Porstman.
I've seen some, I was looking through some ballots and some were get, trying to get initiatives or districts set up. And I saw that they had put a paper that kind of put questions that they think the citizens would be concerned about. And so you could put, for example, is this, you, do you, does the city have the full existing money? And then it was like below that, it was like, no, the city does not have the full existing money. This is actually the breakout. And so I don't know if we can send all the main concerns and misconceptions we had from the previous ballot and put it on that sheet and then with the answers below to say, hey, no, actually this is what it is. And no, actually this was what it is. And I think we have that data now to be able to use that for this, for this future election. And I don't know if we could send that, like, because I think we got in the mail, little handouts to say, hey, this is what we're doing, maybe have it on the back of that to say, these are misconceptions, you know, or do you have this concern, kind of questions and stuff like that. I'm not sure if we're code or legal-wise not able to do that or if we're restricted there, but if we could.
Some of that, yes. I mean, ballot language is very tight.
Right, for ballot itself, yeah.
But it's, you know, we can't actively campaign for it, but as, you know, as I found at a lot of these town halls and, you know, one-on-one meetings, it's, it doesn't take very, too many steps before we go from, yeah, the, the capacity of the pipe to property taxes. And so I think there's, there's some room for us to just share generally frequently asked questions. And that is one that gets asked frequently, yes, and the balances of the reserves and why they're not available for some of these projects, unlike some of them are.
Right, yeah. Something like that might be a good thing to have on the back of a, a handout, you get, you get in the mail or something to be able to wean out those misconceptions.
Counselor Wright.
Yeah, so I would, I would support this going on the ballot again this fall because two reasons mainly. The, the survey suggests to me that this would increase the, the yes votes in the fall. Just because some of these main issues were communications challenges that, the roundabout one that probably started long before we started this process in March, April. The, the other reason is only 18% turnout seems very low, not a good reflection of the community, even though the turnout this fall suggested that that would also be fairly low, but 34% is definitely better than 18%. But I would be concerned if this, if this doesn't pass in the fall and we keep putting it back on the ballot again and again, I'd probably have to think that through a little more and see some more data before making a decision like that. This fall, that seems reasonable to me.
Hey, Counsel, Counsel Schroeder.
Do you need a motion from us to do that?
Well, I don't think we need to have a motion. It's just discussion and there's general support for it, so we'll have to keep moving forward with that.
So you've got three meetings in, sorry, in August, the 11th, 18th, and the 25th. And so I'll work with legal and the clerk and our bond counsel. If I can get everything compiled, it will be on next week, but it may be, 18th is a special meeting just for budget and I might have to see if I can get on that one, or the 25th, which is the last Monday before the deadline. So I will have something in front of you this month.
Counselor Porstman.
Just real quick, I won't be here on the 18th, so just a heads up. I will be in Florida, so.
Counsel President Claybird.
Not that it matters, but just.
I may have the same problem.
Yeah.
Giving a birthday. That means Raffington.
We'll just keep, we'll, we'll rally and keep moving forward. Yeah, but thank you for the heads up. Okay, are you with us, Kristi?
I am, Mayor, yes.
Okay, well, it looks like we're going to move forward. I'll be in contact or Director Johnson will be in contact with you.
Great, thank you so much. Enjoy your evening.
Counsel, next, we'll move to item B, B1, Advisory Board and Commission Appointments. Number one, Disability Advisory Commission. Considering appointment of Jolene Cliff to three-year term on the Disability Advisory Commission, I would tell you that I spent time with Ms. Cliff, asked her to come into my office and we talked about the, the commission and where maybe some of the weak spots may be, but where some of the strong points are too. So she's very excited about serving and I'm excited to nominate her. So I moved to approve the appointment of Jolene Cliff to three-year term on the Disability Advisory Commission. Second, it's been moved by Mayor Johnson, second by Counselor Schroeder to appoint Jolene Cliff to three-year term on the Disability Advisory Commission. Those who favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries, thank you. We're very grateful for those who serve us. Next is item C, Resolution 2025-25, Reconsidering Improvement of Cooperative Agreement for Mutual Assistance. We can anticipate Lewiston, the State Forester, Idaho Department of Land, State of Idaho, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. This is an action item. We have our, the fire chief with us here today, Chief Wrightmeyer. And Counselors, just by way of background, this resolution was not approved previously. There was an invite sent out asking for council members to meet with the fire chief and myself to talk about it. And Counselor Wright met with us, we went through this, talked about some of the programs and the contract itself. And so Counselor Wright had asked that I put this back on the agenda. I did not wait for a council meeting to have him make the motion, have it seconded and voted on. I just agreed to put it on the agenda, so that's why it's here today before you. And so with that, we will welcome our fire chief, Wrightmeyer. Please introduce yourself to the record. The floor is yours, chief. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Greg Wrightmeyer, your fire chief. Pleased with the opportunity to, to be at a work session because I think that this is that time where we can have a conversation back and forth and work through some things. Counselor Wright was very helpful for me in, in kind of dissecting that I, things I hadn't communicated well with the council. I thought I had been clear and I hadn't. And there were these unanswered questions and the mayor also had some of those. So I appreciate the opportunity to, to get with you. I'll just real quickly go over if I can. So just a brief outline of today, just going to review, kind of just a high-level review of what we presented in May and look at that, answer any questions that you have and, and again, seek some, some next steps. Just like, I think Director Johnson set the stage for me perfectly, is have those conversations and get some direction from the council. So when we talked about this before, just kind of broke down the, the essence of what makes a really bad wildland fire and how that can, can destroy a community, a large section of housing. And that's when you get that, that hot, dry and windy events, when there's no defensible space in between homes and you don't have enough fire resources to, to be able to get that done. Little picture here that I showed before that we see the vegetation, vegetation spread and then eventually vegetation reaches the edge of where there's housing. And then when housing starts getting involved, the ember showers with the wind drive. Sometimes your embers, you're starting to get roof shingles. You picture a piece of tar paper, roof shingle flying 40, 50 feet in the air through a neighborhood before it finally lands and it's on fire when it lands. And so that's the kind of ember showers that you get in structures and how that spreads throughout a community. Looked at some of the larger historical fires here and how that affected things, the Hatway Fire just this last year back in, in May, right after I had met with you folks. And that was 250 acres that, that burned in that, just a few hours of time there and had about 100, 100 homes that were under evacuation. So we looked at that, we talked about where we have those proximity lands on our borders in that, that south and east area and the wind-driven fires, those historic area. This is a picture of the same area. This was last night on a, an app that we use called Watchduty. And the arrows there, what that shows you is the direction of the wind and kind of the, the larger, thicker arrows are heavier winds. So that's, you start seeing, that's animated when we look at it. But I just grabbed a screenshot last night because it, it just showed that, that setup. The winds don't always blow this way. Sometimes they're coming up out of Modi Park and up those draws when we're getting a wind coming in. So as the, the low-pressure systems push into our area, real predictable wind flow that we're going to get first as they come in. And then it, as that low pressure passes us, the wind circles around. We've all seen the meteorology pictures where it's spinning in a circle. So coming in, it blows one way and then as it passes, it blows, it turns around and blows the other way. In, in May, we showed the June outlook for a large file, large fire potential in the northwest there and saw that we, we were kind of in that area. And then what we see now is, is as we're looking through, through the month of August and looking into our September predictions, you know, it's, it's, it's normal that it gets worse as the year goes on, we're further into the summer. But you're seeing that we're, we're not seeing any changes as things have developed and the monsoon patterns that come out of the southwest and bring in the, the hot, dry, windy conditions to the, the Pacific Northwest and the inland Northwest. So one of the things that, that we talk about a lot in our leadership training in the fire department is leaders intent. And that's that clear, concise direction that comes from the top down and it carries with it what, what the vision of the end state looks like. And so when I, when I say, hey, I want this type of a program, I, I cast that vision for my staff and then I, I let go because I don't have all of the information on the day-to-day operations at a station or within an engine company of how to get that exact specific task done. And so it empowers them at that decision-making, at that point of action and allows for continuity of the mission when I'm not there. And really that's, that's what I, if I had thought it through better, that's what I was asking for from you back in May is what is the council's intent and where do you want me to take the fire department and take our fire protection in our community? So I presented you with three options in May and option two was the, the direction that the council gave. And so this is where the, the breakdown I think happened. I should have come back to you in June at the work session, said, okay, here's what the steps will look like to get this done. And instead I just kind of plowed through full speed ahead. And I think that that's where, I, I saw the questions you were asking in council meeting. I didn't have great answers for you at that second because I hadn't prepared for it. And when I was able to sit down with the mayor and Counsel Wright, I saw that pretty clearly, that's like, oh yeah, I didn't explain this. I didn't explain all the risks, all the associated things. And sometimes it's hard to know as a director, how much detail you guys want to, want to be, I think, sometimes it's interesting and it's like, yeah, I really want to learn a lot about that. And other times it's like, eh, please stop, chief, don't tell me anymore. So trying to hit that target appropriately here. So the first step is the Idaho and Washington mobilization agreements. These are high-level agreements with the state agencies that provide us basically a partnership with them. For us, Idaho is what's important, obviously. And that mutual assistance agreement that's, that was before you and is, is before you tonight, it, some things that that provides us that weren't, I think, really clear. When we get a fire encroaching on a city, we had this with the Evans Road Fire a few weeks ago over in Assotin, over by the dump. And that fire was encroaching on neighborhoods, it jumped the road and had we not stopped it where it jumped Peola, it would have ran right up and then right back down into the, the golf course area there. So a couple hundred houses in its pathway. And the way that we were able to stop that was with aircraft. Washington State has a, a pretty aggressive aircraft program where we were able to get two of Bob, of Pope's helicopters that were right here in Lewiston, they were able to launch immediately and start doing bucket drops. And then within an hour, we had another helicopter added, an Air Attack, which is a, an aircraft that kind of does air traffic control up higher. And then three other aircraft coming from Grangeville. And then we were able to mass those resources with retardant drops and bucket drops and keep those neighborhoods, keep the fire hemmed in and, and kept it from going anywhere. We don't have that availability right now in Lewiston. I don't have the availability. If I call, I have to call through our dispatch center, they have to get emergency declaration and then we're really on the hook to pay for it until something else gets settled out. In talking with IDL, they, they won't say that they would never come help, but not having this agreement in place is not going to speed things up. It would lengthen that process of getting those resources rolling. Whereas if we have this agreement in place, we make a call, IDL's dispatched and then I can, our incident commander can make a phone call or a radio call and talk to the incoming IDL incident commander and get those resources rolling. Another thing that we can do is the training records management that they have to track all of the, the wildland specific training and everything. If we, if we've signed this agreement, we have access to that training records management system, which is just a more robust system that's specialized where our, our own internal one isn't. Grants are another thing that are available through IDL. They manage the federal access equipment grant program. And so those are things like getting wildland trucks from the military or side-by-sides. Sometimes you'll see those get, get through that program and different equipment is available through them. And so that, you have to have this agreement in place in order to apply for those grants. And then the last thing for, for Idaho and it applies to Washington is that reimbursement for hire. That's the process that we go through. And I'm not saying that we won't. I mean, we've, we've been able to bill them. It just sets all of that in place and it's done ahead of time instead of having to process that after the fact. So the second bullet in, in option two was continue mutual aid at development. What I've been doing with that is working with Nez Perce County Sheriff's Department. The sheriff is the, legally, he is charged with the mitigation of uncontrolled wildfire in areas of the county that don't have a fire district. And so the, the area, Lewiston Hill, out Hatway Road and then down to our South Tammany, all that stuff, that's the, that is an area where the sheriff is in charge of that. And Nez Perce County has an internal department, similar to like their roads department or their water department, that's a fire department. And they have, I think they're up at 20 volunteers right now with a new fire chief and they have a half a dozen pickup trucks and, and flatbeds that have been modified. And they have one, one fire, actually built fire vehicle that they got through that FEP program a couple of years ago. So we're working with them to figure out when they have a fire like the Hatway Fire, how, how are we going to approach this and what are we going to do? When lives are at risk, when, when the fire is actually on the ground and it's right against the city, what are they going to do so that we can, we can help, we can guide, we can lead, we can walk away? But all of it's been figured out ahead of time. Because it's, 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 you know, an ethical and moral thing that we have to figure out and, and really we need them to, to establish their process and their plan. And I don't know what that's going to look like, but we're having the conversations and the mayor's given me a good leader's intent from his, his aspect on how he would like me to approach it as far as the finance end of things is that this is, it's not mutual aid when you don't have anything to give us. So then we got to figure out, well then how do we, if we're going to give you resources or share resources, how do we reimburse or recover that, you know, that financial investment? The next steps will be just working with the Nez Perce County agencies, Lapway and Coliseum, figuring out what agreements are in place. Do they meet our current standards and how we go through? And that's probably, that, that'll happen, these next three things will happen really in the off-season, next winter, when, when things have slowed down from, from wildfire. And then the rest of those Idaho counties that I listed out and the Washington counties, just to make sure that we have good legal agreements. And those are, those agreements are with actual recognized fire departments. And so a good example would be like Evans Road Fire. We have two engines that came from Blue Mountain, two engines that came from Garfield, two engines that came from Whitman. We sent one engine and Clarkson had an engine there, Wheatland had an engine there. So we kind of build up that resource by everybody sending one or two. And so we got to figure out what that looks like in our Idaho County partners and where they're at. Because it's, it's a little less organized than we are in Washington. They just have a more mature system is all, not better, just more, more down the road. The last bullet was the two-county circumference. And I thought that that just sounded like a logical thing. And then I, I looked at a map and I went, we're not intending to do Spokane County. It's really just our, the, the counties that touch us are the, are the ones that we would be working, because they're the ones that can come help us. Spokane's not going to send down a strike team of engines to Lewiston. That's, I mean, if the whole world were on fire, maybe, but that's not, that's not the intent or the, the look for this. And then developing the response guidelines and procedures. When all of this is said and done, when all these agreements are in place, that's the legal side of it. And there's the operational side of it. And that's where. the operational side of it. And that's where the mayor works with me and says, chief, I think this is the kind of stuff we should do, I think this is the kind of stuff we shouldn't do. And that's where we make that work on a day-to-day basis of making sure we're making the right decisions for our citizens. And that's, to me, that's really twofold, is one is that we protect ourselves first and foremost. Part of that protecting ourselves is we're going to need help some days. And so what level of help do we exchange in order to make sure that we have, we're a good neighbor and we have good neighbors to come and help us? So with all of that, kind of the review and stuff, kind of similar to, I think Director Johnson might have stole my slide here. What's next? When do you want me to return and report to you? What questions do you have so that I can carry out your intent? That's what I need, is that leader's intent from the council and make sure that we're going in the right direction.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Spickelmeier?
Thanks. So, chief, my concern in the beginning concern was that it appears to me that Nez Perce County doesn't have adequate support to support their own county. So we sign this, and we all of a sudden become Nez Perce County's Fire Department.
Yeah.
If we do sign it, then they'll back off getting the needed support that they should be providing.
Sure. So I think to address that, this agreement is with Idaho Department of Lands, not with Nez Perce County.
They're our neighbor.
Correct. But this agreement that was before you is about Idaho Department of Lands. I agree with you, and I think that that's the direction the mayor's given me is really in alignment with what you're saying right now, is we have to figure out ahead of time, when we can sit in a room and we're all warm, dry, and fed, what are we going to do the next time there's a fire like that, like the Hatway Road fire? Because that was, I mean, that was truly multiple people calling 911. Worst-case scenario, Nez Perce County was already at a fire in Waha, and this one happens. So you've got multiple people calling 911, it's in our city and outside our city. People trapped in their driveways and their houses can't get out and can't escape. You know, that's, before we're at that point again, we want to get this figured out. And we're working on a meeting with Chief Showers, Pat Showers is the new fire chief out there, and with Sheriff Scrimshaw and Chief Deputy Rigney, to get that meeting together. And then we're going to sit down, we're going to figure this out, and we're going to put an operational play down on paper. So we have this figured out. Because I just think we've been, for too long, we've been going along not dealing with it. And, you know, you have one or two fires every other year, it gets a hot topic, then it goes away, and other things are in your way. But I'm committing to you, we're, I'm ironing this out, because it's, it just puts our folks in a bad position when they're, they're there at the moment, the flames, the smoke, the people. That's not the time to go, well, gee whiz, we don't know, and...
So I guess as a follow-up, me, for myself, I can support it as long as we have, you know, maybe a combination option two and three, where we have some set parameters and limitations on what we're going to do.
And I think, so what I hear from you is that that would be in that last bullet, when we get to the operation, what does this look operationally? How do we lean that forward? And I think that that's where the council, you have to decide how much input do you want. I need it ahead of time so that we can act on what your intent was. And there's no way that you can figure out every single thing, but I think that that's where probably the return and report is, when I get to that point, is to bring a plan to you and say, this is what I worked out with the mayor, and this is what we think is the best thing, so that you can address your concerns there. Would that be a reasonable path, maybe? Okay? Others? Counselor Wright?
Yeah, I just add, so the main, the main things which I discussed with you previously was, was what you're talking about just now, kind of that, the how, how does this actually, the decision process function? Because I get that this, this agreement would be better to be in place than not be in place in case of an issue. And just to add really quick, one of the things that really jumped out at me was, if we need air support, we really don't have that right now. If we could possibly get it, it would cost us a lot of money being part of this agreement. The state of Idaho will help us with that, that scenario, needing air support around here. So anyway, back to the how, how does this actually occur? Because the, the agreement itself is more of, how does, how do people get paid, and the fine print on a lot of things. But the, that decision on what's our readiness this week or this month, and can we send people out? Okay, we're going to send people out, it's imminent, imminent attack, hopefully I'm saying that right. Now, it's no longer imminent attack scenario, what's our reassess process? Should they stay there, you know, the two weeks to clean things up or come back? That decision process. So that's, yeah, and that's what we discussed before. But I think that's the, sort of the fine print on our side that's, that's important to me, definitely. I just wanted to add that.
Yeah, and I think that there's some, a little bit of unknowns on what direction the Governor's Committee is going to go. There's a MOU that's been signed by the Idaho Department of Lands, Idaho State Fire Chiefs, and the State Fire Marshal's Office, along with IOEM, to start operationalizing the Governor's Wildland Plan and what's that going to look like in the next couple of years. And there's definitely a, in the national picture as well, the lean toward using local resources, because they know the terrain, they're there the first, and they can do it. The, where the reinforcements really do a good job is, once those initial local organizations have been on scene for that first day, and really kind of, you either make the big attack and you get it, or Mother Nature and everything is against you, and it's going to become huge. In either case, if it becomes huge, you need the local resources, like we did with Cougar Creek. With the Cougar Creek fire, all the local, all those national resources came in and started fighting that fire. And the local DNR crews were parked right back at the Assotin County Fire Station. All of the Assotin County resources were there. And, you know, short of some paramedic support that we gave in the first couple of days, all of those resources go to work, and you bring all your locals, because we have to be ready for the next call, the next incident here locally. And there's not a lot of interest locally or a lot of need to have our crews out there for weeks cleaning up and mopping up. That's really what the contract crews that come in, that's what they're there for.
Chief, I got a question. And I apologize, I didn't pick up on this earlier. But if you have a copy of the agreement on page two of six, the agreement itself, do you have a copy?
Do you have a copy in front of me now?
I'll just reference this and give it back to you.
Okay. You need to read it or?
No, go ahead.
Okay.
On the bottom of page two of the agreement, so that would be page 39 of 172 in your packets as you follow along, it references Exhibit B, and Exhibit B is not included with this submission. Can you just explain that, please? Because I think it's important to know that.
Yeah, Exhibit A and B, those are the maps that should have been with that. It just shows a map of, it shows a map of IDL's Ponderosa District, which is on the north side of the river, and then the Craigmont District, which is on the south side of the river. So there's two IDL districts that border us. And then it shows a city of, our city map in our area.
Is Exhibit A Ponderay and Exhibit B Craigmont? Is that what?
No, the, the state is, Exhibit A would be a map of Ponderosa and Craigmont. And that's, I don't know why it's not in there. It's been in previous versions, so that's an oversight on our part.
What's Exhibit B accountable?
Exhibit B would be the city limits, showing the city limits of Lewiston.
Of what we are protecting, and then A is what they're protecting.
Correct.
So they would have to clear that. So I guess, chief, I would add that you, as a follow-up to this, should the council decide to approve it, provide those maps?
Absolutely.
To the city clerk, and that she'll make sure that they get distributed to the council? So that they have a clear understanding, too? Again, I apologize, I didn't catch that earlier.
As well, mayor, sorry. I fell victim to grabbing what the, I received back from the different processes we have, and just hitting upload and not seeing all the pages missing. So my apologies.
Counsel, further questions? If not, I would entertain a motion. Question? Counselor Spickelmeier?
So with this motion, we're doing a motion just to proceed with the process, not identifying which one of the options? Or what are we doing?
Counselor, it'll approve the agreement, the cooperative agreement that you have before you. But I think what the chief was saying is that we still have some work to do. So if you read in the agreement, for example, it talks about, like, the city of Lewiston, we respond, we're responsible for the first 24 hours of our costs. And those can be negotiated. That might be the standard. But it's those kind of items that Counselor Wright and I and Chief Rieckmeyer spend a lot of time talking about, because just because we signed this agreement, doesn't automatically mean that we're going to respond. So Chief Rieckmeyer has to have the budget to respond. If he doesn't have the budget, he can't respond. And so that's a pretty serious part of this. When he responds and he bills for his costs, is it 60 days after the event, or within like 60 or 90 days? I can't remember. And so he's going to have to take all that into consideration when he makes a decision, because we still have to close our fiscal years out, we have to balance it. So it's going to be tough, I think, in some instances. But that's the standard that we have to hold ourselves to, and we're saying that publicly here, and chief understands that. And if our finance director was here, she would dittle that for us. So, but there's, there's the upside to this, too, that if we have a catastrophic event like this, then we get the help that we need to do initial attack and to, you know, be prepared and fight this. So I don't know either. I can't tell you. But I'm trying to do all that I can to be very defensive on our budget and on our citizen resources, and the chief knows that. And I was part of that discussion when Counselor Wright came in. So we had a pretty honest discussion, I think, even before Counselor Wright came in, we had an honest discussion about this.
And I think a good example of the leader's intent, by having that leader's intent, and last year, when they called for Texas Ridge Fire and they wanted help, I couldn't answer that question. We had, it took us almost a half a day to dig in, find agreements, and then make decisions about that. And so by, by having these decisions made ahead of time, then we can say, oh, our plan is, if we get a call, we're going to tell them, we, we look at our status, can, do we have people? Do we have vehicles? What's going on in our city? Okay, we have a resource we could send, but we need to be paid. And so you communicate that to the requister, saying, okay, we can come, we can provide this for this much time, but we need to be paid after zero hours, after six hours. And we can have that be differently for, maybe it's somebody that we work with all the time, and we get something from him, say, we're, okay, we're in agreement, we have a mutual aid agreement that says we'll give each other 12 hours in exchange before. So a good example of what we have right now, the Evans Road fire, that went Washington State MOP. And so from the time that that was declared, we're getting reimbursed. So do the volunteer firefighters that are there, they're getting reimbursed from the state of Washington. And so that's, that's one of those things where if we just have all these things, we need these foundational things in place, then we can make operational decisions so we don't have to make instantaneous decisions with Google Speed at that moment without all the information. And that's where I think we can all provide that leader's intent to the firefighters that have to make the decision at the moment.
Make a motion?
Counselor Wright?
I would move that we approve Resolution 2025 Cooperative Agreement for Mutual Assistance between the city of Lewiston and the state forester Idaho Department of Lands, state of Idaho, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
Counselor, could you restate the resolution number for your motion?
Yes, 2025-25.
Thank you, Counselor Wright. It's been moved by Counselor Wright, second by Counselor Schroder.
Foresmen.
Foresmen, pardon me, to approve Resolution 2025-25, approving a cooperative agreement for mutual assistance between the city of Lewiston, state forester Idaho Department of Lands, state of Idaho, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. Further discussion? Clerk Brockie?
Counselor President Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Foresmen?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes. And chief, we'll wait for those maps to come to the clerk's office.
Yes, sir, along with the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor, next up, we have item D, 2025 Election Process, Brief Overview of the 2025 Election Process, including key deadlines, candidate filing requirements, and the city clerk's role in the election process. We have our city clerk with us here today, Clerk Brockie. And I'll just say, to begin with, counsel, in speaking with Clerk Brockie, we thought it was important to provide information to the public primarily, so they understand how the election process works, should they decide to take an active role in their council, but also for the council to understand what, you know, our state statute says about the process, so that we can all be informed, too, and what role the city clerk's office plays in this, because she really plays a big role in this. So Clerk Brockie?
Mayor, Counselors, Tanya Brockie, city clerk. Present the 2025 election process, like an overview. Let's scroll through. So why this presentation? So we're going to bring this presentation to you to outline city clerks' responsibilities, help ensure accurate filings and deadlines are met, support candidate staff and public navigating the process, make the process smoother for everyone involved, and to encourage informed participation and support transparency. Who's got a role? So city clerk has a role, manage the filings. I publish the notice, so I'll be publishing the notice of filing deadline. And it'll come out on August 17th, which is a Sunday, and that just notifies that the, when the filing deadline is. I forward the forms to the county clerk, and then record results in council minutes. The county clerk handles the voter registration, ballots, polling, tabulation, certification, and the canvas. Candidates file required forms with the city clerk. To run, you must be 18 and older, a registered voter in the city of Lewiston, and a city resident for at least 30 days before filing. And voters register and vote through the Nez Perce County Elections Office. What is happening? We have the November 4th, 2025 election, where the open positions include mayor and three counselor positions for four-year terms. When is it happening? So August 18th to 29th is the filing deadline, or the filing period. September 5th is the write-in candidate filing deadline, as well as the withdrawal deadline. Your election day is November 4th, and then the swearing-in will be January. So how the process works, prospective candidates will pick up a candidate packet from the city clerk's office. The packets are also available online, and it includes all the forms and instructions. I worked with the Nez Perce County clerks and the Elections Office to kind of revamp the packet and provide additional information that they would like candidates to know also. So after picking up the packet, they'll gather signatures or pay a filing fee. Signatures, you're supposed to collect five signatures of registered city voters, and this will be verified by the Nez Perce County Clerk's Office prior to submitting it to the city clerk's office. The other option is to pay a $40 filing fee. And the third step is file your candidacy. So you'll submit your declaration of candidacy with either the verified petition of candidacy, which is your five signatures, or pay the filing fee during the official window of August 18th to 29th, by 5:00 p.m. Where to learn more, just a few different sites, and City Hall, city clerk's office, Nez Perce County Elections Office, city website, Nez Perce County Elections website, and then the Vote Idaho, which is the Idaho Secretary of State. And they also have additional information.
Counselor Foresmen?
Sorry. What?
What, I guess I don't, it doesn't really matter, more curiosity. If you get five signatures or paying $40, what does the, what does the five signatures do? You know, versus, does it save money? Speculation there, you know?
I'll have to look into that and get back to you on it. I think it's just something that Idaho statute requires. It's either five signatures or $40.
Council President Kleber.
Just a comment, Counselor. What I've learned in the past is, it's, I mean, you get a check for 40 bucks. To run, if you're going to get signatures, you got to get 10 signatures. Because I can't tell you how many of my friends, I vote all the time, and I take them up there to Patty Weeks, and she's like, this guy hasn't voted in, you know, 30 years. I mean, stuff like that, so. I don't know. Alls you got to do is carry around a little petition. Get five valid signatures.
Yeah, and I think for anyone listening at home, that's very good advice. You don't have to limit it to five. It does make sense to probably double that or triple that, you know, to ensure that you have somebody who is qualified to vouch for you to sign that application, so.
And that is one of the reasons why with the process, we've changed it so that you have to go to the Nez Perce County Clerk's Office and get those signatures validated before you submit them. Otherwise, they come to me, and then I submit them to the county, and then they respond back and say, hey, they need more signatures. And then we have to call. So it's just easier, you know, one less step in the process. And even if you do get more than five signatures, the county, their process is they stop after five. So even if you have 20, the first five that are registered or valid, they stop after that, so.
Counselor Klein?
And this can be done, could this be done now? If you were to be, just to get your signatures validated? Or does you have to wait to get your signatures validated until the 18th?
Good question. Because I know the filing, the declaration has to be during the filing period. But I will look into that and get back to you and see. Because that's a really good question. Because you can pick up the packet prior, too. You just can't file it until it's during that.
At the very least, you could at least get the packet and start getting signatures. Right? Just not validated. But you could start collecting them.
And I'll check with the county also, just to make sure that I give you the right information.
Okay.
And for anybody that's watching or listening from home, too, just as an FYI, we, all these positions are at large. We don't have districts that we run for, precincts or anything like that, so. Pretty exciting, our government, isn't it?
Mayor.
This, Counselor Forrester?
Sorry, just want to make sure, for those that are listening, if you do decide to run, really pay attention to your reporting and how your finances go and who your treasurer is. Hopefully I have that word right. Because they're, you know, you could get yourself in some pot water. So just really make sure you're reading that packet in depth to make sure that you really understand the language and how the money works. Because, you know, I've heard of other candidates that didn't, and then they get, they get a kind of, it's like a fine, I think, or some kind of penalty. So, yeah, just make sure you're really reading it for those that are listening that decide to run.
Great. Well, thank you, Tanya. Thank you for your presentation. Counselors, next up, we have the first reading of ordinance 4953, considering amending sections 2-12A and 2-22A of the Lewiston City Code regarding the mayor and city councilor's compensation. This is an action item. And counselors, you have the ordinance before you. And again, you know, we're trying to be as transparent as we can with the public. But this process of determining the compensation for council members and for the position of the mayor, it's not about us. It's about the positions. And so council will be setting this for whoever holds these offices next year. And it's something that's required by state statute. It's something our state legislature does. So this isn't something that we just put together. We're actually following state law on this and trying to make it as transparent and as fair as we can for everyone. So with that, counselors, I will open it up. Counselor Spickelmeier?
Thank you, Mayor. On the last meeting, I watched it on live streaming. And I guess my support is, is that I'm not really, not sure I really support looking at a city administrator, but I would like us to take the time to officially look at it, see what it looks like, see what it would cost the city, and if it would work. So I would support leaving all the pay, the counselors and the mayor status quo. Just closing it out. And then in October, start the process of looking at a city administrator and see if it's something that the city could afford. And then in two years, if it, then we would have a really good idea if that would work. Then in two years, then we could vote again and move on with increasing the pay for the mayor. So that's what I'd support.
Counselors? Counselor Wright?
Just a follow-up on that. So in two years, in that two-year chunk of time, let's say, if, even if it was a month after the election or three months after the election, we could, as a group, still find out that, oh, city administrator is a good idea. Let's put that in place. And then two years, lower the salary of the mayor. Is that, I guess, kind of a question to you.
Well.
What are you thinking there?
And the only reason I see what you mean, but then you would be, a mayor would be getting elected with a four-year term. And on his third year, you're saying, well, we're cutting you down to 25,000, or whatever the dollar is. You know, they would be perceiving that I'm going to make 90,000 or whatever this voted in for four years. So I just think it'd be kind of a slap to change it in two years. And I personally don't think, you know, any counselor increase. I wouldn't support that at all. I don't think any of us are here for the monetary increase. And making a $20 a month increase just makes it look worse for the public, in my opinion.
Other counsel comments? Counselor Forrester?
Yeah, I mean, I was, similar ideas with Counselor.
Spickelmeier.
Spickelmeier, thank you. Pardon my brain. But I was actually even going to go more extreme, I guess, and lower the mayors to prepare for a city administrator. But I'm also okay with the idea of just staying in the status quo to kind of do, to do some more digging. I do have a little concern with that just because I'm not sure how tight our budget will be. And I agree that I don't think a mayor that gets into a position and say, now, we're going to cut your pay is a very good way to go. I don't think it's, nor is it fair. So I do have a little concerns there. But I also have a concern with bumping it. And then we find that, that the next person is just, it's just entirely too much to work. And the amount of work for one person and being efficient isn't there. And now we are really tight and trying to hire an administrator, which typically the pay of those administrators are quite high, from what I'm researching and hearing. And so probably the high, the middle ground would be, as Counsel Spickelmeier had stated. See where I'm leaning.
Council President Kleber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, since I'm the one that made the proposal last time, and we just asked everybody to think about it. The mayor currently is at 84, 84K. I don't have a problem if the mayor continues, chooses to continue and gets reelected, you know, bumping it to 90. The problem is the city administrator. We're going to go that route, which I think would be wise personally, is going to require budgetary considerations over the next three weeks when we're improving the budget for next year. So where are we going to get the money from? And I mean, people really need to start thinking about that. I've said before, I think Mayor Johnson's done a fine job over the last several years. More than I want to take it, take it on. And not just, you know, moving the city forward from a policy standpoint, but also administratively, personnel, all the extra responsibilities that we've had, that he's taken on, that none of our previous city managers actually had to deal with. Those were dealt with typically department heads and, you know, more like settings, so. And as far as the council member's salary and the council president's salary, I mean, I, I, that doesn't matter. I'm not for the money. If I was in the for the money, I would have gotten out a long time ago. Been doing this for a long time. I've been proud of my service to the city. And I still have two years left on this term, and that'll probably be it. It is time for somebody else to step up and take over. And I'm kind of looking forward to that. So, but as far as where we stand right now, I have no problem raising the mayor's salary.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
And I guess to follow up on your comment, my thought was to the administrator, if we did, we would give the two years to decide. And then on the two-year, that two-year budget, you know, two years from now, then implement the administrator.
Just a follow-up.
Counsel President Kleber.
Yeah, the Citizens Committee meets every other year, correct? I mean, those are the people that made these recommendations.
Yep.
So everybody's clear, the city council did not make these recommendations for whoever's pay. It was actually done by a committee of several people from the community.
Counselor Wright?
Yeah, I just, on the city administrator, so if, if we didn't have a city administrator in place prior, and I don't mean hired, but I mean budgeted for prior to these upcoming budget discussions, decisions, can we still get a city administrator before the next fiscal budget? How does?
Counselor Wright, the answer to that question is yes. So the mayor is the chief administrative official for the city. So it's actually the mayor who would hire that person. And the council's role would, to provide the funding, to enable that, allow that to happen. And so it's fair to say that if you have both positions, a mayor position and administrator position, which a lot of cities have that have a strong mayor, it's going to cost a few more dollars than what we're spending today. So you'll get to make those decisions when you set the budget here soon. So you can take that into account when you set your budget to say, hey, if that next mayor needs to hire or wants to hire an administrator, this would allow that person to do that. Absent that, then the next mayor would be in a position of trying to manage that. The mayor's office and anything that may have fallen onto a city administrator, that would all fall on the mayor's office. And or some of that workload would be distributed out to the department heads, so. Yeah, it's new territory for the city, for sure. So it continues to go down this road of transitioning from a manager to a strong mayor from a government, so. And also, I remind counsel, too, this is the first reading tonight, so good discussion. If you want to think about this some more, you can. It'll come back before you can. It doesn't have to necessarily put in the king's language tonight, you know, so. But I know that Council President Kleber wanted to wait till we had all six counselors present, so.
Thank you.
Counselor Forrester?
And as a reminder, too, technically, the mayor position is considered part-time. So a mayor could come in and work part-time. And they are within their assigned duties and expectations to do that. We can't change that as a city. So, but if you're going to do a job as a city administrator and the mayor duties, I do not think that can be done part-time. That's kind of a concern. What is someone that's coming in expecting and how much time? Is there people that are going to be able to just leave their job and come do mayor for a while? Or are they going to try to expect to keep their current job and still be a mayor? Which I think they can do that. I don't think you're going to dedicate the proper time that's needed to be a mayor if you did that. But there's no speculations on how they have to do that. Thinking on that, I haven't, what's that going to look like?
Counsel President Kleber.
Well, the current mayor that we have, who's sitting next to you, certainly isn't anywhere near a part-time job. And I've been in on the weekends. He's actually been working here at City Hall. And, you know, he's done what it takes to keep the city going. And that's, you know, when we were originally presented with this, and what was being proposed was going to step five under the current situation that we have. I don't know that we were going to have somebody that can come in and do all that, especially for 106,000. That's why when I made the comments about the city administrator and the financial burden that present is going to be substantial. So that's, I guess, those are the two choices. We've got an unknown, which is, are we going to get a city administrator or not? And what are we going to do about the existing mayor position? Or what are the citizens going to do about the existing mayor position? So. I'm still okay with what I proposed the last time. I guess I'd make a motion on that.
Counsel President Kleber?
Make a motion to, I have lots of my notes. Hey, that's mine. 4953. Approve the first reading of ordinance 4953. And that would be setting the, this is the first reading, correct?
Correct.
Setting the mayor's compensation at 90,000 annually. City council member's salary at $720 per month. And the council president's salary at 800.
Second.
It's been moved by Counsel President Kleber, examined by Counselor Schroder to approve the first reading of ordinance number 4953. Sir, further discussion? And those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close?
Nay.
Motion carries. Clerk Brocky?
Approving the first reading of ordinance 4953, an ordinance of the City of Lewiston amending sections 2-12A and 2-22A of the Lewiston City Code regarding the mayor and city councilor's compensation respectively and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Clerk Brocky. Counsel, next we move to room number 5, unfinished to new business. Item A, city councilor comments. Comments should not be related to an item currently before the council. An item that may come before the council in the foreseeable future and shall be limited to comments, not discussion. City councilors, comments?
Mayor.
Counselor Forrester?
I just wanted to extend my prayers to Adam. That was the gentleman that has passed away, was found in the river. The family has found him, and he was deceased. There is a GoFundMe. If you go to Big Country News, they have the link so that you can donate to the family in this unfortunate time of need. And any little bit, I'm sure, can help. Again, I just want to extend my prayers. I can't imagine leaving.
Again, I just want to extend my prayers, I can't imagine leaving, losing your loved one, and I think, I hope, I think and I hope that the whole valley is praying for that family in this time. Yeah, it's very, very unfortunate and sad.
Thank you. Counselor, other counsel comments? Counsel President Kleberg.
Just as a reminder and follow-up, Counsel Forrester, yes, it's a very tragic accident that happened, as somebody who's been whitewater rafting for most of the last 40 years of my life, and have done some, you know, leisurely trips and some really, really marginally dumb trips in my day on some serious whitewater, I can't stress enough that people, when they recreate on the water, please wear a life jacket.
Thank you, Counsel President. Other counsel comments?
Yeah, I know.
Counselor Wright?
Yeah, I went huckleberry picking over the weekend, and they appear to be out, so if you like to pick huckleberries, the mountains, we've got lots of them around here.
Counsel, you can drop those off at the mayor's office, and I'll make sure they get to the right person.
My wife has spoken for all of them, I believe, at this point, making all sorts of things.
Were there any bears out, too?
I haven't seen any.
That's good, that's good.
Other counsel comments? Okay, Item B, City Boards and Commissions Liaison Updates.
Mayor.
Counselor Forrester.
I have my historic reservation meeting this Thursday, Tomorrow Valley Vision is having to kind of do a follow-up from the event to talk about what went right, what could have gone better, what do we want to do at the next annual event meeting. Yeah, oh, and the Port of Lewiston, this isn't, I'm sorry, this doesn't have to do with my, any of my committees, but the Port of Lewiston is having a ribbon cutting at the Confluence River Front at 7:15, a harbor raid at 10:00 a.m., August 12, 2025, so, for the Port of Lewiston, so that is good and exciting for the American Cruise Lines.
Thank you, Counselor. Other liaisons and updates? Counsel President Kleberg.
We have a renewal agency review of the budget, a public hearing is tomorrow at noon back at City Hall.
Thank you, Counsel President. Other comments? Non-mayor comments? Counsel, just to let you know that the State Treasurers Conference is in town tomorrow, and I think it's their 100th, so that's a, a big milestone for them, and I've been asked to come and welcome them in the morning, so I'll be there, but we welcome them to the city. Agenda topics, Item D. Okay, Rule Number 6, adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
It's been moved by Counsel President Kleberg, seconded by Counselor Schroeder to adjourn. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned, thank you.